Okay, we're back, we're back live. Okay, so we have, I guess, any other continued discussion on Resolution 2022-18 regarding 2239 Van Antwerp Road? Any questions or comments? Okay, that's no problem. Just scare me. Beyond, okay.
We're cloning you for later years.
All right, hearing no other, hearing no other good comments or questions, well, I guess we'll call it Rome. Mr. Henry?
Mr. Oplam?
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Mr. Darpino?
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield?
Aye.
Ms. Strang?
Aye.
Chairman Wald?
Aye. Motion carries, the resolution is approved, and we'll have the public hearing on August 29th also. If you have any updates to the drawing, to get it, you know, far along as you can prior to that meeting, that would be valuable, so.
Understood.
Public can see where we're at, okay?
I will get that in here, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
We'll see you then. That's three weeks out. Okay? All right, and next up, we have a recommendation to ZBA regarding 1747 Union Street, which is the Risata Gas Station, with a recommendation regarding an area variance for an additional 8.8% of expansion to the building that equates to 128 square feet. We have the representative of the applicant, that's Mr. Cotman, is that right?
Yes.
There. And I think we could start out with, is there any updates or anything you'd like to share with us?
I do have some, there was discussions about options. I do, I do, I did bring some paper copies of options that I can share to you if that's allowed.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. I wasn't sure what your audio procedures are.
Nope, if you don't mind, we can pass them down and you can...
Let me just keep, I'll keep working my own, but there should be enough copies.
We can share them if you need to.
It's updated from what was included in the packet, I see that, yep.
Yes.
And whenever you're ready, you can explain to us what the, at least what the difference here is between what was.
Yes.
Put out to the public and what we have now, because we don't have this available, do we Laura, to put on the screen? Did you email that today, PDF or anything?
I could, I did not, I did not get a chance to, I can.
All right, all right, well, let's at least start with, you know, talking about for the pub, you know, for us and for the public, what the difference is between this one and the one that was posted on our site.
No problem.
Okay.
Well, with this one here, what we were, what I wanted to do, this is a second option of exploration to, to look at, because there was the discussions of the traffic and the, and the challenges of the, of the, of the lot itself. Now, talking with the, with the, with the owner, applicant himself, a lot of the reasons why he is wanting to do this addition is because he has had people, local people come in, many senior citizens, like 60% of his customers are actually in the, are older, in the senior citizen age range approximately. And they have been asking for, for the convenience of being able to get to and have local, and have food and other conveniences locally, right nearby. There is no really, like any kind of grocery store within, within, especially with walking distance. There is some course, within some driving distance of the, of this area, but there, but, but bringing all this, bringing this addition is going to provide more convenience to the local, to the local customers, to satisfy those requests. And that, so that, so that's his reasoning of doing this, of course. He wants to improve, he wants to improve his property also, and, and, and by being able to do this addition, of course, there's limited space, I understand that, and limited, and he understands that too, and that's the reason why this is under discussion. We, what we want to, we are showing here is that there's also the option of moving the handicap space closer to the, to the front door than this one, of course, here, I showed the handicap space right, right next to the addition. Also, to provide, to move spaces eight, nine, and 10 over to the east and provide a little planting bed there, so it may, so it protects those, those three spaces from traffic coming, coming in, at the same time, those three spaces are still available. So we still, so this is, with both of these, the, the discussion was that from the planning board, that they requested us to have 10, to have 10 spaces hopefully, or maybe the zoning board appeals would possibly allow just nine spaces, because the floor space, the proposed gross floor space is 1947, so that equals 8.65, so at nine spaces for customer, customers and one space for, one space for the employees. So, so that, so now we have, so both of these options show 10. The thing that, the advantage, one advantage of having this, this third space here, right next to the building, of course, is we have closer handicapped, and the, the one thing I still is not exactly good is that space four on both of these options is that I personally would prefer, and I think the applicant would prefer too, is to possibly go back to, is to have nine, so we could have space four removed, and that would allow more driving space and better, better safety through, on, on the back of the building and going, going around. Now, this, this, this better shows the direction of, of traffic with, with the arrows at each entrance. We also wanted to, the local clientele and the driving, you know, for safety reasons, and we wanted to allow more room for cars to go around and around, so we don't really want to, we thought we'd be better off to not have to remove any of the curb cuts. Now, of course, that's under discussion, and I want to hear all your, all your, all your comments on that, so, so we, so we can come to a consensus that, that could work for the, for, for the town and, and for the applicant. The, the other thing was that the cooler, we want to switch over to the other, over to the layout page, the cooler, there was discussion about what size is the cooler. That's really, that's really to be determined. I mean, we're showing right here right now as a 21, 21 feet by two inch, about 11 feet seven inch cooler, that's, that's a proposed core. The existing core is, is a little different, it is 10 by 22. That's, that would be, that, that one is getting a little old, he would, he'd like to decommission it, get rid of it, and replace it with a new one, but he hasn't, he want, it depends really, he would prefer to have one that would be of this size, and that way then we could, he could have, we could have access to that. And, because it has, actually has a walk-in door on the, on the west, on the west, on the west side, right, right over here. There would be a walk-in door, there would be a walk-in door right here, and that may get them to store a lot of clothes, and for the customers can open all these doors over here and access. So that, so that, that to them would be the most, because that would allow for easy access to, to be able to, to. This door, this, this door here would be only an employee door, so we could easily take, take the delivery bin, store it in there, and then of course, it would be provided with those doors, and that would have, the, the, the public in, also be able to store and keep, keep items cold.
Podium, will we get you on the microphone?
Okay. I apologize.
That's right. Or you can take you with you if you need to walk over there.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
It's on Velcro.
Wasn't sure what it could do. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, I think, I think we've got the.
It's okay.
Yeah, we got it.
I can stay here. I can, I can, I can point, I think you're, I think you all understand.
Yep.
It's probably easiest to stay right here. And so, we're gonna, he want, he wants to add a grill and a fryer, to be able, to be able to serve more varieties of types of food, and also, of course, the racks will allow for, will allow for more spe, will allow for more, for more stuff to the customer, to, to the customers and the local clientele. So that's, why don't we, why don't we switch over to, to, switch over to the board and let the board give their thoughts?
Okay, good. So I'm the project lead on, on this project.
Okay, you're gonna be, you're gonna be David? Thank you very much.
Okay. So, let's start with the building footprint that we see here in the application that you gave us. There's some things here that we can maybe talk about at the end, but.
Okay.
What we'd like to do, at least for now, is to look at the, the addition. Could you go back to the site plan drawing, please Laura? Okay. And zoom in on the, on the, on the building footprint there.
Wish we could make the black and white show up better somehow.
Okay. So the, I think, I think the, the building footprint, it's, it's fine as far as where it's located on the, on the side of the building. The cooler's been moved to the backside. One observation is, is that I think tucking the dumpster behind the building is fine, that, that screens it.
Thank you.
One of, one of the concerns is if you do have a man door that is on that side of the dumpster, the dumpster is mobile and can be placed wherever the truck may end up dropping it. So if you do have access to the cooler from the outside, not from the side door, like you just indicated, you may want to demarcate that on your plan.
Okay.
Because that dumpster may need to shift over more to the left. In addition to that, we may request to have some more screening on that, because that would be visible from, from Van Antwerp.
Okay.
So that's just one observation on, on the building footprint. The parking, as far as 10 spaces, it's shown here on this plan that the clothing bin is not located anywhere on this property. Is that being discontinued?
Correct.
Okay, so, so you've reached out to that organization to tell them that.
Yes.
At some point in the future, that may not be there.
Correct.
Okay, good. So that clears up that, that corner lot where number 10 is, parking space number 10. Where the handicap parking space is down, which is demarcated as number three, is a little tricky, because you'd have to either pull in through the bank in order to get there, or come in and literally parallel park and back up.
Well, yeah, the idea was to pull in through Van Antwerp and go around and to park right, and park following those arrows.
So, if, if maybe you were to take number seven and rotate that and bank it next to eight, and shift all of those down, you're gonna get more than 13 feet clearance from the corner of the building.
That is true.
Yeah. This, this plan shows you landscaping the corner, which would tighten those spaces up. If, if you look at the scale of those parking spaces, I think 10 and eight are a little too wide for what you indicate. You have nine feet wide.
Okay.
They're all drawn differently. So if you, if you take a look at that, I think you might be able to swing and shift those over.
It's, it's, it's definitely an option to explore.
Right.
I, I, I thought that the handicap space would need to be close to the front door.
Well, it, it should be, and, you know, by code it should be, but I think this site's a little problematic, because if you're.
I wasn't sure that was allowed. Okay, if, if it's allowed to have it further away, then that, then that's something we can definitely explore.
Well, your closest space would either be two or three, if you keep it the way it's shown here.
Right.
Where the front door is. So, the, because right now, you're showing all four points of ingress and egress off Van Antwerp and Union, you don't have the opportunity to explore any other parking, and the reality is you don't get any closer anyways, from where you are, from basically where parking space number two or three is, correct?
True.
Yeah. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough site, but it may make sense to try to bank a lot of the parking off of Van Antwerp, because I know that there's a shared lease agreement with some businesses across the street, that the new owner has inherited, correctly, believe he acknowledged that at the last meeting.
Yes.
That may, that may actually be more beneficial. You know, parking in front of the building, if there was any reason that you wanted to put parking spaces in front of there, you could, you could take a look at that. I know that there is a small sidewalk that is in front of the building, you'd probably extend that as you, you do the addition, so that people could, you know, get around and walk up to it.
Yes.
I, I think one of the, one of the issues is, is that if you're, if you're going to keep all four points of ingress and egress, then you're just gonna be limited to whatever residual space is left for parking.
Okay.
Yeah. And, I mean, at least, my feeling is I'd like to see 10 spaces, and bigger buildings get, sometimes you get more employees. It may be a rotation of employees or an overlap of employees, or the owner may be there at the same time an employee is too. So the reality is there may be one or two spaces taken up if someone's not walking or close by to the site. Those are my initial review comments.
Yeah, but you also show where the, where the tanker's discharge, where the inlet to the tanks are located. I don't think they're on this drawing, are they?
They, they are not on this drawing, they are, they are basically, there's three actual intakes just to the south of, basically, they're on, they're on the south end of this, of that, of that square, of the, of the square, of the rectangular square.
Okay.
So, they're right there, yes.
Yeah, just show where they're at, because that would help when we do the fire review, so they know where the truck's pulling in to do the discharge, right? And the other thing is, I'm not sure about the handicap spot, so I gotta think about that one myself, you know, self, obviously, you want to get as close as you can to a point of entry, but it sounds like there's only, the only entrance is gonna be at the front of this building, is that correct?
Um, for, for. Well, I understand, there's, there's gotta be two exit entrances, by code, my understanding. The, so right now, the, so, so that, so the other, the door that would be on the right, on the right could also, could also be, could also be an entrance right there.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, make sure it's not too far away, do the best we can with the handicap parking, so that, you know, it's conducive. And for the, the rendering that you showed tonight, slightly different, you know, we're talking about site circulation, where that handicap spot is to the, I guess it would be to the east of it, on the one that you handed us tonight, you don't have a dimension there that shows the distance between the end of that spot over to, I guess it'd be the property line or whatever, so we don't, we don't, we don't know that distance, we see where it's like.
It's about, it's, it's, it's about, it's about 15, it's about 15 feet.
Yeah, because it's 15, four is what you're showing on, again, the revised.
Yeah.
Which is similar, I believe, I can't have to zoom in. Because, again, that's important for, you know, for the, at least, the fire review to make sure that their apparatus.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if the fire had, the fire, fire, fire employees have had a chance to do the review yet.
I'm not sure if they had or not Laura, but, but we, we will, so we want to, you know, make sure we got all the dimensions that they need to take a look at.
Okay, so I can.
Yeah, so having the, having a parking space ju, out beyond the building is gonna be problematic, only because if somebody doesn't pull in all the way, the tail could be out.
I know, I know, it's like you like that location, but I know there was, the, the, I would prefer to have it where, in, down there, where we have it, down there where I showed on that plan. That way then, it's, 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 it's a, you can still drive around. The, it was, I wanted to show that as an option to see if, to see if there was, to see, to see if that was something that would be preferred by the planning board or not, you know, I'm not, that'd be, not the safest.
I agree with David, I mean, it does seem like it's odd right there, and it could be problematic, you should tell me it's 15 or 16 feet there, again, if they don't pull up, you know, it doesn't, you know, so yeah, it seems like.
Yeah, I didn't exactly like that location either, but if, if it's allowed to have it over there, like, over there at, between spaces seven and eight, to have, turn space seven into a handicap, that, that would definitely would be a lot, would be, would be a much safer spot for a handicap space. So, I'm, I like that, and I think that would, I think that would, that would appease to the owner and stand still allow for, allow for ease. Now, I mean, I mean, we could, we could explore a door, a different location if that is necessary.
I, I don't think it's, I mean, you're gonna have to have, you gotta do the code review, but, you know, if there's two points of egress that are required for this, you know, you gotta go through that code review and make that plan cater to what that is. The, you know, the other thing that may, you know, may affect your layout is, you know, I know that there's box truck deliveries, but are there tractor-trailer deliveries? And you may not know this, but if you have to find that out, if a tractor-trailer has to navigate through this site, are they pulling in and backing in at certain times? Are they trying to go around the building and come in parallel now to the, to the new addition, load from that side? Are they loading from the backside, which would be on the north end? You know, are they cutting through the bank? That's, these are questions.
I know, I know, I've, I know, I've actually seen one, I know I've actually seen a large truck, I don't know if it was a, they just decided, parked right in that, between the bank and bank and the gas station right there.
Right.
There are spaces, it's, those, having those space, having, having those spaces in, of the bank right there has, makes it more difficult for, for traffic. I mean, I don't, I don't know why, why I was allowed to have that many bank spaces to block that entrance before.
I mean, the tanker trucks come in, and they, they come in down the northwest corner, that's, that's where the filling area is, so, you know, there, that's a full-size tractor-trailer, that's been on site, but that's coming in, I'm assuming it's coming back out onto Union, or coming in vice versa. It's where the deliveries coming to the building, which are separate, that need to get that close proximity, so whether it's on the north end of the site or on the east end of the site, you know, that should be, that should be figured out, and whether you want to do an overlay of a full-size tractor-trailer on there, you know, to see what the turning radius is, you're going to be extremely tight on the back end of the building.
Yeah, okay, one of my concerns is that when deliveries are made, that people still be able to get in and out, because we've got another business in town where, when the big tractor-trailer rig pulls in to make a delivery, it basically blocks off the first row of parking, so if people are in the store, they come out and they can't get out of their parking spot. So you've got to figure that in there too.
Right.
And that's one of the reasons I actually like the multiple ingress egress points, because it does give people a little more opportunity to maneuver their way around.
Yeah, the police and fire did get a preliminary look at this, and, I'm jumping here, but I'm pretty sure that the, one of them, I can't remember if it was police or fire, wasn't super excited about closing off any of the entrances.
If you're expanding the retail operations, I'm, I'm concerned that this circulation pattern really is an invitation for someone who's not buying gas, just to parallel park in Union or Van Antwerp, blocking the way, to be given, I mean, will, will people really need to swim it up in parking, parking spots if they're coming in to go get soda or milk?
Well, we can, we can provide signage to, to direct parking, and right now, the problem with your, which is why you're bringing it up, because there is no real, it's no real signage right now on the property, that shows where the parking is, except for, there's like one handicap down by where three is right now, and it show, to show where parking is, so people just, right now, they just park wherever they want to. And that, and that is part of the, why, why there is so much trouble on the site, is that there is no striping, there is no signage to direct people. Now, that can be provided, and that would, I think that would, would provide more safety, probably better safety for, for the community, if they have, if they have, if they have appropriate striping and proper.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to, once we decide on the site configuration and we're all in agreement, that's, I think that's part of the deal, it's gotta be, you know. I was over there today about 11 o'clock, went inside and walked around the site, I'm glad to hear about the clothing drop-off going away. I know they're valuable to the community, but there's, are quite a few of them out there, because, because there was a lot of garbage, looked like somebody dumped some sofa and cushions out on the ground today, over there, so it didn't look too good. One of the things that I'd also, a question I had after walking around the property, is once, if the proposed addition gets approved, is the plan to, to clean up the whole site, paint the building, because you can see around the back, the paint is all peeling off, it looks, I mean, it looks pretty bad.
Yes, the plan is, the plan is.
So it's to clean up.
It's to clean up, it's to clean, it's to clean the whole.
We'll make sure we probably include that as, in the condition to make sure, you know, there's, you got like a tree growing right next to that AC compressor thing, it just seems like, you know, just cutting that down will give that thing an opportunity to breathe back there, you know, some, some maintenance. And is this a new ownership? Is that?
I'm fairly new, yes.
Okay. Yeah, and at the time, when I was there, just for information, it's just one point of time, of course, but there was only one person, one car parked, and that was the person that was working, and then myself, and that was it, and just people, but people were coming in, getting gas, you know, not going into the store, so it wasn't like, but if you offer, start offering food and things, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we are estimating to, to improve sales, let's say, by about 1.2, 1.4, and we can't, of course, we're not adding any more gas pumps, so that, so, and the gas pumps are gonna stay the same, so that's still, the reason why you can't just say, like, we're gonna add, by adding 25% space, we're gonna increase it by a huge amount of sales, because we're, still, much of the sales, of course, is, is the service of gas, not the service of, service of, of the actual food. So, I mean, I would, I mean, and of course, it all depends on economic, economic times of how much actually you're gonna, we're gonna, how much, how much we can estimate an increase of sales, and it's, the goal is to be able to provide, let's say, you know, to increase sales by, let's say, 25%, is something, is, is what is the, is what a goal of the, of the owner. Of course, you know, you can't, we can't really say that, of course, under our economic conditions that we are under right now.
Okay.
Hello?
There you go.
Is it better?
Better, that's a lot better.
Thank you. There was a connection over there, I think. Do we, did we dismiss the possibility of reducing an egress ingress due to the recommendation of the fire department or police department?
No, but they said that they would be concerned with one of, any of them being removed, and if we did remove one, they wanted to be a part of that discussion.
Was, was the reduction of an ingress egress considered?
It was, it was under discussion at the, at the previous meeting, I don't know, I don't know if you were here.
I was not here.
Okay, I, I wasn't, I couldn't even remember, sir. But that was, was under discussion, the, I mean, the, what, what, from the applicant's point of view, was that they, he would prefer to not, to not cut it off, but he was, but he, but, but he understands if that is a requirement, you know, he's, he's willing to, he's willing to discuss that, but he would prefer not to, and, but we wanted, but we wanted to see what everybody's, what everybody's opinion was before we, before we, before we decided to, before he decided to allow that as, as an option.
I, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole that may have been, already been visited, because I wasn't.
Well, no, there was no decision made, it was a comment, I can't remember which source, might have been several sources, but so it's a work in progress.
I mean, it just, it just seems to me that if you, if you took a diagonal 45-degree line between Van Antwerp and Union.
Yes.
You can probably put four or five parking spaces right there, and eliminate one of those two egresses, it would solve the parking problem if there is growth of 1.4 in purchasing, stopping and purchasing items. So, I agree with Mr. Scrubby Tennis, that if it were to grow, then the parking problem, you'd have a lot more entrances and exits, when you probably need more parking spaces, so. I don't want to, you know, go too deep into that, but some of the, some other similar retail, corner retail.
Okay.
Designs only have two.
I'm, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, so just, I'm just looking at that going, I just want to make sure we're considering that option.
Okay.
Can I just ask Laura, is this applicant coming back before us?
Yes, yeah. A lot of this is, is site plan discussion.
Okay. I, I would just, Mr. Cotman, I would just say, please, 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 bring us back some visuals of both coming, both ways on Union Street. I am a really visual person, and I'd like to see what your landscaping plan is gonna look like. I know we did request that last time, and I know you're looking for a recommendation to the ZBA, but when you do come back, we really would like to see those. Thank you.
Thank you. And David, so, as far as this new plan that was submitted tonight. And David, so as far as this new plan that was submitted tonight, what's your view on that? Is that a, besides the handicap spot, that island, were you, near parking spot 10, where you're saying that should go away in order to free up spaces, is that what, I just want to make the comments clear for the applicant, so I understand.
Yeah, I think.
What your recommendations are.
Okay, so, so this plan, some of the merit in here is that you have the parking, you've got parking spaces four through 10 on the north end of the property. It would be nice to have that little landscape buffer on the end along Van Antwerp.
Okay.
But I don't know if that is going to really serve a lot of purpose, when it might be better to have for parking, if you needed to reconfigure that. I believe that the delivery sequence, other than the sizes of the trucks, will probably be a component of how you look at that parking.
All right.
Space number four, I think, is gonna be pretty tight.
Yes.
I, I don't think space number three on that plan is a bad location, but the reality is, right now, a lot of people pull up in front of the building on what we call the southeast corner. If they don't park in a, a space for gas, then they park right in front of the building. So I don't know if you've explored that or what that distance is there, but if delivery trucks aren't coming in front of the building, and they're going to just go around the perimeter, again, maybe there's an opportunity to pick up spaces there. I don't know. The, the one thing I did look at was the ingress and egress, and because you have two separated set of tanks, cutting off a corner, I think, may be problematic, because you would, you would dead-end one of the, one of the tank stations.
Yes.
And that might be problematic business-wise, because you don't want people backing in and backing out, at least if they can circle it. And because of the, the, you know, the ones that are on Van Antwerp are so close to the road, you know, that sidewalk ends up at the top, it's really just continual pavement.
Yes.
Yeah. So I think that with, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily mind the four points of ingress and egress, and technically, it's really five if you count the bank, because that parking lot is connected.
Yep.
But I think, you know, really looking at the delivery function, and then where it makes sense for parking close to the building, may drive what your decision is. The other good thing on this plan is that you moved the propane storage and the ice to the side of the building.
Right.
Getting it off the front of the building.
That's, I was, I was, I was, what I discussed with the owner, that to make it easier on the traffic was to get with, with not have that stuff blocking, and that would also make, make, make for a cleaner site from Union Street. And, and to put it on the side, of course, because right now, of course, the, the view of Van, from Van Antwerp side, those doors right now are pretty small for the bathroom. Of course, that, those doors would be improved as part, as part of the improvements. And, and to, and to make it, and by moving those over there, over there also, that would definitely, would, would allow for better, better ease.
Okay, any other question I have before we move on to our recommendation to ZBA, and this is for Laura. Laura, for this parking, we have waiver or banking capability in this project?
Um.
If you don't have the answer, if you need to look it up, we can, you know, we can take it as an open item, all right? And the reason I ask is, David, to your point, if, you know, say four is hindering site circulation, you know, we could just, you know, we could either bank it, or, you know, potentially have a waiver for one parking spot.
You could bank it in the location. Like, as long as, like, that's not your preference, but it could be put there, then you guys definitely have the power to bank it.
Maybe that wouldn't be the most wise one to bank, maybe it'd be a different one, but it's something, another tool that we can use when we get down to site plan.
Yeah, if it can fit, you can bank it. If it can't fit, that's where you run into problems.
Just wanted to mention that. So I think we need to make our recommendation, and then you've gotten some feedback, it's a work in progress. Let's get you to the ZBA and see if the ZBA grants the area variance, and then we'll get into much finer detail. But I think, I think you, you know, you got enough information to give us another round.
Yeah.
Assuming that the ZBA grants your area variance.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's why I wanted to come here and talk, and talk at the same time. I, of course, I want, I, I think, my first understanding is that the ZBA have to, if they, if they were to grant the area variance, then, then, then that will allow us.
Yep, we'll get, we'll get the nitty-gritty and finalize everything based on the.
Mr. Chairman, I had a quick question about the floor plan that was provided.
Yes, sure, Patrick.
I noticed that the service counter, where the cashier would be located, is being turned into additional merchandise area. And I do not see where there is a, a counter behind which a cashier would stand. Can the applicant point that out to us?
The owner actually wanted the layout with the counter there, and so he would, he would not think he was not of the opinion that he needed to have somebody actually stand right behind the counter. If that is, if that is, I mean, he, he wanted to have the counter in, in the, in the south, in the southeast corner of the building, right, right, right where that, right, where you're pointing right now. So he wanted to have the counter there and not, and maybe to not have, to the employees to have to be behind.
I guess another way to phrase it, where's the register, do you have a location?
That would, it would be, it would be in that corner, and he, and he didn't, he didn't really want, I asked him, he said, he doesn't have to have the employees behind the counter. Now, that's, that, I know it's a standard thing to have a, have a, have a employee behind the counter. He didn't feel like that needed to have to be unless, unless that's something that's gonna get enforced.
Well, I mean, it just sounds a little weird, I mean, you gotta, you have cash, I mean, if the register opens a certain direction, you know, you would think.
I, I understand, I'm just, I'm just telling you, telling you, telling you what the, what the owner told, the owner told me. He said, he said he wanted to have the counter, like I asked him, do you want us to space that? And he said, no, no, don't need to.
Well, that's a good comment from Mr. McPartland, so maybe you can show us where the register is on the counter, or what the, what the thoughts are.
So the register, register registers, one or two would, would be basically right on, right, right on the counter, right there.
All right, why don't you mark that up when, you know, again, when you, when you come back, based on the ZBA, right?
I, I can, I'll discuss it with him.
Does that work, Mr. McPartland?
I don't, I mean, maybe he didn't fully understand what he, what he really wanted.
Yeah, I think you need to look at code for that, like, I don't think that possibly could ever work.
Yeah.
I, I know.
Especially if you got lottery machine or whatever, I mean, you need to, you know, things got to output in a certain direction, you just, you know.
Okay, so.
And like, for just the safety of your employees, like, if they're, that's not a good idea.
Yeah.
I, I know, I, I know, it's, I was just, I was, he's the owner, so I didn't want to, I asked him, and he said, he's like, no, I, no, oh.
So we'll take that, Mr. McPartland, as an open item, it's a good question. Thank you. All right.
Yeah.
Also regarding the layout, I understand that the existing cooler is a walk-in cooler that, that both, that the customer can walk into. So my question is just, is that the plan with the new cooler? And then, how is the cooler stocked? Is the cooler stocked through the same door that, that the customers would enter through? And did the applicant consider installing a cooler that's more like a traditional quick-service convenience store, where a customer helps themselves through three-foot-wide swinging doors, and the cooler itself is only stocked, is then only entered in and out by staff?
Well, right now, the, right now, it is only entered by staff, and that's the way, that's the way he wanted to keep it. It is not, it is actually, there, there is a, yes, a walk-in door inside, but he did, he was not planning on having actual customers going, or only, only, only employees. So the only, so, so the, the doors would only be on the south side for, for, for customers. And they would, the doors right now are not three-foot doors, and he could have three-foot doors. I mean, it depends on which cooler he decides, he decides to buy. But he, but, but the, the goal was not to have customers actually walk in through the walk-in door. Customers would only be able to access it through, through, through the, through the doors on, along the south side.
Okay.
Okay, great, great.
All right, so our business tonight is to make our recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. You, you received a building in zoning denial for your application, and that's based on Section 220-10E1. It states permitted principal use is limited to reuse and/or expansion by not more than 25% of the existing building. As applied to the 1455 square foot existing retail and service store, the allowable area expansion would be 364 square feet, and your proposal is for 492 square feet. So therefore, you need a variance for 128 square feet or an 8.8% area variance in order to proceed with this application from the ZBA. So that's our recommendation that we need to make tonight. Our recommendation, we ask a few questions, and this gets passed on to the zoning board of appeals. Basically input to the zoning board, and the first one question we have, is there an effect on the comprehensive, is there an effect on the comprehensive plan, Mr. Diopino?
No, there is not.
Recommendation, there's no, no effect on the comprehensive plan. All those that concur that there's no effect on the comprehensive plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. There is an effect by Mr. McPartland? Okay.
I believe there is, I believe expanding this, this use on this particular site does pose a bit of a risk to pedestrian traffic. And I, I believe that the comprehensive plan is very clear on the goals for the CN district in improving pedestrian safety by installing sidewalks and ensuring that traffic is directed accordingly to, to safeguard pedestrians.
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. McPartland. The only thing I would add, though, is that as we get through site plan review, obviously, safety is important to this board, and we'll make sure we take a look at sidewalks, and if we have to bank parking to make it safer, that's an option that we would have. So, thank you, Mr. McPartland. So that was a six-to-one vote on the effect on comprehensive plan. Next is suitability, suitability of use for the proposal. Mr. Diopino?
Yes, I believe it is harmonious with the current configuration of what the store is and what the expansion is intended to be used for.
Okay, so it is affirmative that it's a suitable use by Mr. Diopino? All those agree that it's suitable signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have one nay. All right, any comments to help support either opinion?
Well, personally, I do not find that the variance, the area variance sought is suitable. When you consider the existing use is approximately 1,500 square feet, and the code does allow for a 25% increase, which is 360 additional square feet of retail space. It's, it's my opinion and belief that that should be a sufficient addition. And based on the floor plan provided and the description of intended use of that additional added space, I, I don't find that a, a variance for 8.8% additional expansion is suitable.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McPartland. Things that, I guess I just, points I'd like to make, I know we like to try to give something for the record of, it is in a neighborhood commercial district, and it is a permitted principal use. There are other similar businesses that have probably less site circulation than this site. Specifically, I believe in the package, the store, it's on the corner of Ball Town and Council. You know, you can't go around the building, so this is, you know, still has the availability of at least going around a building, and we'll have that reviewed by fire and police. And it's an opportunity for the site improvements. The site does need some work, and with the addition, I'm gonna, if it does get approved, I'm gonna push that, you know, we ensure that the building gets cleaned up. And, you know, the site gets delineated, the parking, et cetera, so that overall, it's an improvement to the site. That's, that's the only thing I'd like to add. Anybody else, any other comments regarding suitability? Okay, and then the recommendation, Mr. Diopino, to the zoning board of appeals?
Yes, I recommend it to be presented to the zoning board of appeals.
And that, and that they approve, that they approve the area variance?
They approve 8.8% area variance.
Okay. All right, all those agree that the ZBA should approve the 8.8% area variance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, one opposed. All right, so we have our recommendation, thank you, everybody. You have your work cut out with the ZBA, we'll see what happens, and in the meantime, you can start thinking about the comments you heard tonight. If you get your area variance, and we'll continue working on the site plan, to make sure we offer a safe addition to the public, okay?
Thank you very much, sir.
All right.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you to the board.
Chairman Walsh, one quick question, Laura. Should we, should we update this to reference the drawings that the applicant provided or showed at the meeting tonight? We didn't have them when we wrote this recommendation, so we referenced the prior version. I don't think it matters on the square footage, but.
I, my opinion is that, you know, you can give it to them and say it's a work in progress, but, you know, we have to work through site plan based on them granting the area variance, so I don't think it really has any impact.
Yeah, I think it's okay to leave it as cited, because the proposed addition didn't change. But at the zoning board meeting, I can mention that there's a new, like a newer site plan that the planning board was looking at.
Yeah, I, I wanted to provide as an option for discussion, so everybody could, could, could look at different options.
Okay, all right, thank you. And that's it for this subject tonight, so.
All right.
All right. All right, and thank you, everybody, for your patience. We'll move forward, discussion items, first up is 1515 Hillside Avenue, that's Hillcrest Apartments. This is a new project, site plan application for the signage. Do you have a representative of the applicant tonight?
Yes, my name is Richard Crawford. I apologize for my name not being up there on the screen. I don't know, didn't know how to do it. I'm a project manager and designer for Bartruce Grinds, where located in central Pennsylvania. And I'm on this call tonight with Lauren Ruckhizer. She's the design director for Morgan Properties, the owner, and Justin Vies, the sign manager for Morgan Properties.
Okay, thank you, and we received all the information, obviously, in our packet. I don't know if you just want to summarize anything for our discussion? Basically, it's no ownership, no signage, and there's gonna be a couple of waivers that are gonna be required to approve the signage. And I also heard tonight that the signage may be installed, already installed, which I.
Yeah, I, I do admit to that, and that was my fault. I should have been familiar with the rules of the town, and I apologize to the board and to the town. We've done about 70 of these projects in New York State since 2019, and at properties where we were just directly replacing signs, we've not been asked to get permits. And I guess I got a little loose with this, and we should have come to the town first, rather than afterwards. The signs are installed. And I appreciate how the, how the town itself has handled this, and it gave us the opportunity to make this application and come before the board.
Okay. Bottom line, again, we've all received the information and pictures or drawings of the signs. But there's two signs that, if we, as we move forward, looking at a potential approval of the change in signage, there's two waivers that would be required for one of the directional signs, and that'd be a waiver for eight square feet is required. And in another direction, sign number two, that would be, and then sign number five also requires a waiver. It's stated in the packet of three square feet, but when I take a look at it, I believe it's actually four square feet, wasn't rounded up. So Laura, maybe, I don't know if you have, could you pull up just where number, sign number two is located and sign number five for the board, so they can see what waivers, the locations of the sign, see if there's any concerns?
That might have been my fault in doing the table.
So sign number two is a, is, requires a largest waiver, that's eight square feet. Four square foot is allowed by our code, and this is directional side, and I believe it's, is it internal to the site, or is it on the hillside?
It's at the corner of Hillside and Randy Road.
And Randy's a private internal road on the site, right?
That I'm not sure about.
It is, Laura confirmed that, yep.
So when we did our initial survey, we thought that for wayfinding purposes, it'd be appropriate to put a sign here indicating the buildings and indicating the property. So this, this is the only new sign that was installed.
And the previous signage, it actually, and I apologize, because I don't remember, does actually tell you where the groups of buildings are, like the new signage does? And the old, was there, or is it basically?
Not a sign at this location, this is the only new sign.
It's the only new sign?
Yeah.
So it's beneficial to be able to find the buildings instead of driving around trying to look at numbers, right? I mean, that's the bottom line.
Yes, and the reason why we use 12 versus four is for visibility purposes. It's hard to put this information and identify the property and give the driver a sense of place where they are with the four square feet. place where they are with the four square feet. We didn't go to the maximum on the height, though. I think eight feet is permitted.
All right. So the only other option, you know, we're kinda like the ZBA on this stuff. If we grant waivers, we always say, hey, what could you have done to minimize the need for a waiver, right? So this sign is the, is it eight by four? Is that the one we're looking at?
This is three by four.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Sign two, okay.
Yes.
Yep.
I just only offer to the board in my professional opinion that this is an appropriate size for a directional or a wayfinding sign.
Yep. It's a three by four feet. Okay. Any thoughts from the board? But this is basically three by four, 12 square feet. And again, the code is four square feet, so it's an eight square foot waiver required for the sign.
I have a question. Mr. Crawford, you said that the signs were already installed. When were they installed?
I'm gonna go memory, a month and a half ago.
Okay. With every due respect, you do this for a living, so this is a little, you know, put it up now and apologize later, excuse me for saying, but really, there should have been a little bit more on the ball about this.
I agree. Like I'm used to doing many of these where towns have, similar towns are not asking for applications where we were directly replacing or we put up incidental directional signs. And also, the month and a half was, I believe, the town contacted the property and then said, hey, you should come in and make an application. And then I talked to the town and by the time we did all that, it's been a month and a half.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. And then the other sign that would require a waiver is the number five. Scroll that, Laura, please. You already got it?
Number five is a leasing center sign, where one was. This replacement sign, 7.8 square feet. The old sign was 5.25.
Yep.
And in consideration of the waiver potentially, I'll point out that we removed and did not replace sign 5B, which was 10 square feet on the building.
Correct. Okay. So that would be a four, four square foot waiver if we go forward to resolution for approval on this sign. Any thoughts from the board on either of these needs for waiver? I mean, personally, I don't have a problem. I mean, I didn't realize that they were put up. I apparently don't go that way that often, so with that, I drove by and I wasn't paying attention. So I'll, you know, obviously take a look before the next meeting. But I guess off the top of my head, I don't see a problem, is my opinion.
Well, I have a comment because I do see a problem. Originally, Hillcrest was two separate apartment complexes, Randy Gardens and Suelon Gardens. Then it became Hillcrest East and West. To me, it's a lot easier to read east than to look for a specific building number. And then you don't need the bigger signs to put all the building numbers on that sign. So I wish this had come to the board before the signs were put up because I really think that's a point worth discussing. You're just gonna slow people down if they are out on the street trying to figure out, geez, the building I'm looking for in there. If they know it's, they're looking for the east complex, see the east sign and go in, they can more leisurely look for their particular building number.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the board?
One of the applicants has their hands up.
Oh.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
This is Lauren Ruckhizer. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to address that comment because it is a valid point. So I've been with Morgan Properties for seven years. We purchased a portfolio in October of 2019 of 95 properties, 80 of them being in New York State and the balance across the country. So, you know, in these efforts, while I do agree that at one time they were branded east and west, the powers that be and the executives of the company decided that both sides of the community were to be marketed and posed to the public as one. They don't reference east and west on a customer forward-facing basis moving forward. In addition, the addresses to the actual units, which is the major reason why we added these building directional signs and shout-outs off of Hillside Avenue, the addresses to the units are based on the building number. So whether it's east or west is really irrelevant when it comes to a mailing address for either visitors or package deliveries. For example, apartment A3 in building 70, the address to that building is 70 Hillcrest Village West and then apartment A3. So that was really, it was more of just a logical, I do understand what you're saying with the east and west and there's a perspective that it should have been continued to be portrayed that way in signage, but with the change in ownership and then, you know, us deep diving into the way in which units are identified, packages are delivered and visitors are directed, that was really the thought process behind shouting out the building IDs. I agree, it's a lot of building numbers to have to try and identify, but considering that none of, there was no signage previously that identified the building numbers, we just thought it would be important and couldn't hurt at least someone trying to locate a particular building if they knew, you know, building 50 was to the left versus the right.
I wonder if anybody talked about this with the board of elections because people are registered as being either in Hillcrest Village East or Hillcrest Village West. And it kinda makes a difference.
When you say people are registered, what are you referring to?
I've talked about the board of elections. They are registered to vote from a specific address.
Right. East and west is still part of the address, but it's identified by the building number. So 50 through 175.
Have you made the board of elections aware of this change? And actually, it should have gone through the town before it went anywhere.
I don't think it was a change necessarily. These have always been the addresses to the apartments. I don't know if the previous owner went that far into, you know, the addresses before they determined signage, but we didn't change the addresses or the way in which people, you know, identify with their unit number.
Well, she said that the address didn't change. Address still says east or west is what you're saying, stating.
Technically, the east and west designations are part of the addresses of most of people there. I looked at their registration recently.
I'm just saying, but she just said that it didn't change, so it's still in the address, right?
Correct, yes. It starts with the building number and then it says either Hilton Village West, apartment, et cetera, Hilton Village East, but it starts with the building number, either 50, 70, 80, et cetera. Along the lines of the signage, and this is just a question, have you notified any of the emergency services, just so that way they're aware of the new signage, just so if anybody, police, fire trucks, anything have to respond, they're not looking for the old signs, just to better place them where they need to go? So that's a courtesy, if anything. Sure. So the locations of the signage that was existing prior to us owning the property has not changed. We merely changed basically font types, colors, logo, phone number, but the locations of where all the signs were previously that had the community name and information are all still intact and are all still there, but we added that additional sign with the building numbers off of Hillside Avenue and that private road on the one side of the complex.
All right. But what we could also do, though, Laura, is we could also send this out to Fire District, I guess it's one?
Yeah, that's probably Fire District.
Fire District one and the police to make sure they're aware of the signage change. Just, we'll take care of that as part of this application. Thank you, Ms. Schoenfield. All right. Any other thoughts from the board?
Well, I mean, we're kind of doing this hindsight, but it's always good to see options because previous applicants, we've asked them, you know, what can you do to meet the code? And then if they come in with another proposal, at least we have something to weigh it against to determine if that makes sense, that eight square feet is not enough or six square feet or whatever the minimum is. I think at a minimum, you would owe us that design option to see it so that we could see what a code compliant signage would be for both types and then let the board discuss it and determine if the sign should be replaced.
Yeah, that's what I was saying about minimizing the request for the waiver. It's the same thing, right? So come in with what it would be, what those two signs would, what would be on those signs if they were to be compliant? And, you know, you're, Mr. Crawford stating that the amount of information would be difficult to read and that's drives the need for the area required for the signage. Does all that information need to be on there? You know, so that's, that's the kind of thing. So it wouldn't hurt to have a sketch of what it would, what, you know, what information you would be able to get on a code compliant sign so we could see the difference for those two signs. We got three weeks between now and our next meeting. What we could do, if it's okay with the board, we could call for a tentative resolution. You could submit for the two signs that require waivers, what they would look like or, you know, just your summary of why, why they need the waiver, right? Because again, they're already there. And then we'd have the opportunity, because we have three weeks between this meeting and our next meeting, to make sure we're comfortable with that. And if we have a tentative resolution, well, we'll vote on it. All right?
Okay.
Does that sound fair?
We will do that, yes.
Does that sound good to the board? Okay. Let's do that. And, I mean, the signs are up and again, we got some time here and if, if you're, what do you call it, your validation or your justification of the need, if the board doesn't see fit, well, then we'll approve one or two of the waivers if that's the case. But let's, let's see what it takes, where it takes us, okay?
One of the applicants raised their hand again.
Yep.
Sorry. Can I just clarify? So sign number five previously was not within four square feet.
Correct.
Does that matter?
No. I don't know when it was approved, how long it was there. It was, when it was like five point something, right?
Right. And so there's nothing on file that said that there was any special permission for that sign to be larger than what's permissible?
Well, no, it probably received a waiver from the planning board, but it's bigger than what it was before.
Okay.
Okay, got it. But if we were to reduce it down to what it was previously versus the four square feet, is that an option?
That is an option. Clerk and I looked for previous submittals because I do remember when they rebranded to the H8, there was a HH, there was a sign package. We definitely didn't receive a variance, but potentially received a waiver from the planning board.
Okay.
We'd have to double check that, though.
So I guess for your, for, makes sense then that if it was, was it 5.3 or something like that, square feet?
5.25 versus 7.
Yeah. So...
And then we'd also ask the board to take into consideration, we removed that other sign.
Yes, yes. And we appreciate that. You know, that was a large sign.
Okay. So, and Rick, I'm sorry if I'm asking these questions, but just to be clear, we're, it's just sign two and five that are a problem.
That's correct.
Yes, we're gonna be, um, side by side comparisons.
Okay. And the revision for sign five, we could propose at the previous size and not the four square feet, but you would like to, the board would like to see sign two and a rendition of that in four square feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts from the board? All right. So we still, it's okay, we're still gonna have a tentative resolution. You're gonna submit the options and any justification of why they can't be met so that we have that in our decision process. And I would assume that we would vote on the resolution and at the next meeting. Okay? Assuming you get that submittal into us, all right?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. All right. We appreciate that. Any other questions from the board or from the applicant? No? Okay. We'll be in touch.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your patience tonight. All right. Let's see where we at. Okay, 1739 Union Street and this is the Storch shop that's, they're remodeling. It's 85% in the City of Schenectady, 15% in Niskiuna. And I think what we've done, Laura, with these in the past is basically talk about it, whether we have any concerns or any input we want to provide. And if there is no concerns or input, we could like just basically hand it over to the City of Schenectady.
Yep. You can, you could, you could sort of vote to give it to the City of Schenectady or you could keep it. It's entirely up to you guys.
Yeah. Or the other option is, you know, make sure we, even if we hand it over, they keep us abreast of any changes or that happen in the middle.
Yes, although I just have to remind the board that when we handed it over to Colony, they voted not to take into our consideration. So once we do hand it over, like our conditions do not bind them in any way, which we learned the hard way.
Okay. But in the meantime, we have, let's see who we have with us tonight?
Marcus Andrews, I'm with Storch's.
Oh, okay. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
All right.
Again, just a quick summary of what we're looking to do here. There's a small freezer, approximately seven foot nine by 19 foot three. We'd be looking to add to the exterior of the building in what is today is pretty much just a paved alley behind the building. Now it wouldn't be visible from Union or Palmer. Excuse me. Along with that, we'd be looking to pretty much just dress up the face of the building. Existing building is pretty much three sides of brick and then a pro panel on the backside, the alley side. We'd be looking to do like a siding with a faux stone on the bottom.
Yep.
Siding in a faux stone on the bottom on pretty much both street sides of the building. The alley side would remain, the pro panel siding with the freezer a beige color to pretty much blend into that, the siding, I guess. The freezer would only be accessible from inside the building. There would not be any exterior, you know, access to that freezer. And it's more just to, it unfortunately won't gain the store a lot of retail space, but will, will allow further items to be stocked in the store. It'll increase the backroom space as well as the freezer space for the store. So it will be able to offer more products, just not additional retail space within the building.
Okay.
And again, as discussed, this is an unusual site to where the town line runs pretty much right through the property with approximately 85% within the City of Schenectady, 15% approximately within the town in Niskiuna.
Looks like we may have more of the exterior freezer, though.
Yes, yes.
It's like 60/40 there.
Yeah.
You know, the other thing, a couple of things came to my mind. One is, you know, I think this is probably a freezer similar to one that's on, was it Ball Town and Council Road? I think there were some changes several years ago there. So the only thing that came to my mind was it looks like there might be a residence of a Van Antwerp, is noise generation, is there any, you know, is there gonna be any change that would impact any of the neighbors?
There will be no, the noise that is there today would be the same as it is with the freezer on the outside. The compressor units for these freezers are there today.
They're already outside.
We have a freezer in the shop, the compressor units sit outside.
All right. Noise generation is still in the same location.
It's still the same location, yes.
That was the one, the only thought I had, taking a look at this. And the other thing was, was really to ask the planning department if the town has received any complaints that we have an opportunity to address regarding, you know, this location.
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah. And there's no signage changes at all?
No signage changes, no.
We love our signage, as you know.
Is this project in keeping with the one on a few blocks down in Schenectady, on Union and Brandywine? Aesthetically?
Aesthetically, yes.
Same concept?
Same concept. We've been looking to do at the majority of our stores that our new stores, we build similar, you know, facade with the stone and the siding. Our older shops that we really can't rebuild at, we look to dress up with this feature as well, just to give the, you know, the area a different look.
Yep. No lighting changes?
No lighting changes, no.
All right. Yes, comments or concerns from the board?
There are two other commercial spaces attached as a part of this building. Are they both occupied?
They are both occupied, yes. The facade will carry the whole, the whole frontage on Palmer. The facade will carry pretty much the frontage along Union, wrap the corner and go up Palmer. Yes, luckily, luckily, these are two good tenants we have, so the option of stealing some of that... So the option of stealing some of that space for our own retail as of right now is not an option.
Have you demarcated the construction area? When this, when this work begins, there will be contractors on site. They'll need storage areas.
Every, everything will be in pretty much that back alley area, which right now is paved. It's, it houses a dumpster, and that's really, that's all that's in that back area.
All right, okay, so I guess I don't, personally, I don't see any concerns. If I haven't, you know, if the town hasn't received any complaints or anything, we have an opportunity to improve. I mean, this is typical of what we've seen other renovations. I believe we have a similar freezer outside at that other location that we went through a few years back, a similar upgrade there. So, you know, my, my opinion is that if, unless somebody has concerns, if we don't have any specific comments for the City of Schenectady, maybe we should just turn it over. But it's up to the board, what do you think?
Given the percentage and where the percentage is relative to the visibility, I think we should hand it over.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that?
I agree with Mr. LaFlemme, especially if we haven't had any other interactions or comments or concerns on this area from residents that at this point, we should probably turn it over.
Yep, especially since no signage, no lighting, no site circulation, parking, none of those things appear to be changing, so, or plan to be changed. So I'm okay with that also. Anybody disagree?
I mean, I feel like our comments about like landscaping and stuff aren't very relevant because it's not within the town of Niskiuna, those things that we would look at. But potentially with the freezer, if, you know, if you can do that as energy efficient as possible, because like we are trying to make sure that all of our proposals have high levels of energy efficiency to reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
So Laura, when you're, so you usually write a letter back to Schenectady?
Yeah.
Maybe you can include that in a letter and that.
Something I know of.
And that if there's any opportunity, you know, for just site maintenance, if it's required.
Yeah, I don't know if there's street trees or anything there, but if there were.
There's unfortunately not a lot of room for them. It's, there's a little bit of green space right at the corner. That house is a freestanding sign. Now, I believe it's a small monument sign. Outside of that, there are some street trees along Palmer.
That's what I was wondering, if there's street trees there, that would be my only comment.
There are trees there.
But if there's there, if they're there already and they're doing well, they're not dying?
They are doing well. They can be looked at. I believe they are doing well, though.
That's where the picnic tables are.
All right, so Laura, you could maybe just take a look at that and if you can include that in your letter if there's a concern with the condition of the trees there. Include that in your letter if you feel the need to do that, all right? And then we'll hand it off. Anybody opposed?
Just one quick point, I'm just looking to learn. There's a big monument sign that designated Union Street district. That's not marked in your plan, right?
That is not, well, it is, it's right here.
Okay, you got it.
Yep.
That's not part of it.
That, that is not planned to be touched, planned to be changed, yep.
All right, I think, I think we're all set. I think you got your direction and the planning office is all set. And they'll draft a letter with any concerns regarding quality or condition of the trees over there and, and promoting energy efficiency. I think we'll be okay. I'm sure that's something you guys want to do anyway, with a new unit putting in, you want to be as economical as possible.
Definitely.
All right?
All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for patience again tonight.
No problem, have a good evening.
All right. And the last discussion I'm tonight is thirty, twenty-three forty-one Knott Street. And this is the Shoprite Plaza Chase Bank ATM. That was, they're back here in front of us. And again, thank you for hanging in there. And why don't you give us, start out with an update? Introducing yourself and give us an update.
Yes, okay, Laura, am I able to take the screen?
Yeah, you can, yeah. If it's easier for you, you can do it, or I can do it. You just hit share screen.
Yeah, it would be easier for me if I could grab it.
Yeah.
Let me see if.
Is this Mr. Quinn, or I can't see the name that well. Oh, Mr. Riley.
I'm sorry, yes, it's Tom Riley for TKO Installations. We're representing Chase Bank. So hopefully, you're now seeing the first sheet of the original CDs that we presented to everybody a couple of meetings ago. I thought I might just start out by refreshing everybody's memory as to what the plan development is. So we're proposing a freestanding drive-up ATM installation here in the parking lot at the Shoprite Center on Knott Street East. So just in the lower left-hand corner of the sheet that I started with, we've got our site plan, the area, the developments outlined in red. It's on the interior of the parking field in an underutilized portion of the area. It's got quite a bit of screening behind it from the existing vegetation. So that's sort of the, the, the beginning stages of where we're at here today. So we've been before this board twice before, and we've gotten feedback on a number of things. A number of those specific to the ATM installation, I'd like to touch on two major topics tonight. That's the, the lighting that we have updated in order to meet the local code. And also, we wanted to give you some rendering from a brand book that the bank had created to give you some visualization of what this is going to look like with the muted color palette in order to conform to the local restrictions within this district. So that's what I'm going to do for you right now here. So I'm going to jump off of this CD presentation unless there's any questions or comments before I jump into that.
No, why don't you go ahead, Mr. Riley?
Okay, great. So next document I'm going to bring up is a brand book that was created by the signage manufacturer for this particular location. So the first page here, we've got a shot of the general vicinity of the parking stalls that we're going to be consuming for this drive-up ATM installation. So that just gives you a visual for where we sit, sort of on the interior of the parking lot here, just beyond, I would say, to the backside of one of the main entry exit points into the shopping center, right by the main monument sign that will come up, I think, in later discussion. So to give you a visual from a plan perspective, this is what I just kind of showed you a little bit earlier on our CDs. So this is the entry exit point that I mentioned, all the screening that's behind us and the landscape. And then inside here is our ATM installation. So we're going to be entering from the bottom portion of the screen, exiting on the top portion as we drop down to this next sheet. I'm going to give you a viewpoint from sort of the customer perspective here, looking into our ATM installation. So if you can imagine your customer driving in here from the lower portion, you're going to come in, you're going to encounter this VHD installation. So that's got the muted gray colors that we talked about before. The bank uses the Chase blue for its branding. So we are changing that in order to accommodate the, the local muted color palette. So this deters any, any vehicle that shouldn't be using this installation because of the canopy that we're providing, to provide a little bit of protection to our customers. So then after that, we encounter a light pole. We always put a light pole on our ATM islands. We do that purposely because we're very concerned about safety and security of our customers. So we maintain some minimum standards that the bank has developed, and we'll talk about that a little bit later in the lighting discussion that I have planned for this. But that's the reason for the light pole on the installation, even though I think you saw that there is a light pole in the general vicinity from the original picture that I pulled up. The rest of the installation is basically the guts of this ATM site. So we've got a full-service ATM machine here. So that's going to accept deposits, give you cash. It's going to allow you to do a bunch of different transactions. So basically, a contactless, full-service banking experience from a retail perspective for their clients. And also clients that are members of the networks that the Chase Bank is a part of. So it, it provides those services to customers that aren't directly Chase clients as well. We've got bollards in the area to protect these various elements. And on the exit side, we've got a combined meter pedestal and switch panel, providing the electric to all the elements that are on here, right? So this is a perspective from our elevations in all views for both the island portion of this on the entry and the exit, the front view of the ATM itself, and then our VHD. And then also the signage elements that we're going to be proposing here. So on the exit side, we have two pieces of DOT signage, stop and do not enter appropriately placed for the traffic that's going to be flowing through our site. And then here at the end, I want to just give you a few photographic visuals of this area. I think you're all pretty familiar with the Shoprite Shopping Center here as being local. But you can see, this is sort of an underutilized portion out here. It doesn't get very, a tremendous amount of usage from the parking perspective. And it's also pretty dim when you get to a lighting perspective, when you take into those safety and security aspects here. So a few more of the area here, if you're looking for a particular element, it's probably reflected there. We provided these to Clark. I think it's part of the meeting materials that you've all had. So you've got this to have further study if you need to. But we just kind of walk ourselves through here until we get to the end side. So when we became, came before the body before, we, we had a number of comments. So a number of those were relative to improvements for the shopping center. I'm going to touch upon those at the end of this discussion. So I know Laura and I had a lot of correspondence about that. I mean, a number of accomplishments there. We think we're at a point now, we're hoping we can come to a decision point with the planning board, and we'll try to get into that before we wrap this up tonight. And I'm recognizing this is late for everybody tonight, so I'll try to make this as brief as possible. So, so one of the things was to provide color renderings of what the ATM is going to look like with a muted color panel. I think we've done that for you. Another one was to provide renderings or photos of what the ATM is going to look like from multiple vantage points. That's another thing that we think we accomplished with the brand book that we just showed you. The rest of the, the actions that we took from earlier meetings were to revise the photometrics so that the light pole that we're proposing conforms to the twenty-foot height, twenty-two-foot height restriction, which we have done as well. And then also to give you sort of a perspective what that lighting is going to look like from around the area. And that's something that I'm going to do a little bit right now to try and show you what, what we think that's going to be. I don't have detailed photometrics of it, but I'd like to give you just sort of the practical aspects here. So we're going to use full cutoff fixtures, right? So the minimization of, of light bleed is very much in our intentions, right? So the location's on the interior portion of the parking field. It's going to have full cutoff fixtures. It will not contribute to the ambient lighting outside of the property lines. And I want to give you a little bit of perspective of what we're talking about here. So I'm going to pull up, let's see if I can do this real quick here and change this to another shot. Okay, so what if I do that? I don't know if this is going to work. Okay, so are you seeing this street view shot that I have, I think, up on the screen now?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay, so let's see, how are we going to do that? Let me. All right, let's try this. Okay, how about now? Almost, here we go, almost coming up. Okay, so what you're seeing on your screen now is a street view shot of the entry exit into the Shoprite Shopping Center just behind our location, right? So we're looking out from that towards the closest residential housing, which is a pretty good distance away. And I'll give you that perspective. So that's looking back at our shop, at our site with the screening that's in place. And granted, this is not a, an absolute current picture, so I'm sure there's some changes here. But it gives you an idea of how far away from any residential housing that we might be with our lighting. There's also some, I think, mixed-use multifamily unit housing up this direction on, on Knott Street. Also a considerable distance of where we're at. So, so I guess the point that I'm making on this is that, yeah, we're not planning to impact the site such that we're going to have any sort of light bleed that gets out into the general vicinity, you know, out here on the other side of Knott Street. And we're not going to contribute significantly other in the area that we're proposing the ATM to the existing lighting. So, so, you know, concerns about that bleed, I think, might be a little bit more practically looked at, you know, with, with what we're talking about here. So what I want to also now is just switch to the photometrics so to give you that perspective here. So this is a photometric plot that utilizes the lighting that we're going to be proposing here. So I mentioned earlier that we try to maintain some specific standards for the bank in order to, to meet some safety concerns. So in the area around the ATM face itself, we're trying to maintain ten-foot candela. That's being provided by the down lighting that's in the canopy that's there today. Again, full contact fixture or cutoff fixtures, so it's just projecting lighting down towards ATM users. We also have a light pole that's here. And, and what that's trying to accomplish is this yellow circle that you see, that's sort of oblong, that matches the lease space that we have for the ATM site. And that's a two-foot candela area. And, and that has been a, an industry standard that Chase has settled on in order to try and meet both the safety concerns that they have from a practical perspective with the codified requirements that some jurisdictions have for lighting of this type. So another viewpoint of this from sort of the bird's eye view with the overall lighting here is in the second screen that we have for this. And again, this is with a twenty-two-foot pole so that it matches your local code. And we think that this is the optimal lighting solution for the site, taking into account where it sits in the parking field with the screening that's around it and the fixtures that we're proposing. So we're hoping that you'll see fit to, to approve that as well and that our justification is sufficient for that. So I believe that covers the applicant actions that we had taken on from previous discussions. I also wanted to touch on some, some other, let's see, let me get back to. All right, there we go. So I wanted to also get back to a few other issues that were brought up. So there were a number of issues that we worked with Laura and the local tree commission in order to address for knock compliances with the existing shopping center. So we've already done quite a bit of work. So we removed some trees that were obscuring the monument sign. We had several flower beds that needed remulching and weeding done. We had all of the volcano mulch that Laura and the Niskiuna Tree Commission identified readdressed so that we wouldn't be contributing to trees that were then subject to distress and, and/or worse. And then we have four other action items that I believe comprehensively addressed the other comments that came from our last meeting. One being twenty-one dead or missing trees that need to be replaced. Two being four striped crosswalks. Three being repaving of the, or excuse me, restriping of the parking stalls in the plaza that would be done in conjunction with the ATM site development. And then finally, at that same time, we would address any potholes in the parking field. So those are all commitments that the landlord has, has committed to in order to address the comments that came from this board. So that, with that, we hope that we are now in a position to sort of comprehensively address all the questions, comments, and concerns that we've gotten after two very good informational sessions with this board, such that we can move on to a potential approval. And, and that's where we stand today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Scrubby Tennis, any comments at all? Mr. Scraby Tennis, any comments at all?
No, I appreciate the comprehensive discussion over the, you know, light disturbance that would be passed the building across the street. I have no comments.
Yeah, best I can tell. The only question I have is that whether we need to validate the photometrics to make sure, you know, take a look at the map. You know, it was updated to include the 22-foot light pole height requirement. You know, I don't know if town-designated engineer is needed or whether Mr. Henry or somebody just take a look at that to make sure the spillage is, you know, if there is any spillage or the light, I should phrase it that the light stays on site, I guess.
Well, if this is part of the, okay, Patrick says it's hard to hear you, Mr. Scraby Tennis. Pull your microphone in. If this is part of the submittal package for building permit, like, it's compliant because the property line is on here and there's nothing more than one foot candle. I think it's okay.
Yep. And that was a good listing, Mr. Riley, of the open items, which if not complete, would be included as conditions in any resolution to make sure that they are completed as part of the process of updating the site to allow for the ATM. So thoughts from the board? Are we ready?
I had one question. Was the stop sign and do not enter sign part of the original package?
Yeah, it's a standard component of this design that we do. So yeah, I believe it was.
My feeling is, do we need, do we need them? ATM is pretty straightforward.
Could you pull up, could you pull up the, whatever?
Yeah, the site plan drawing?
That would show the location of those signs? There we go.
Uh, let's see, that one's not, so it's on the exit side. It's not listed in the rendering. So it's bollard-mounted, so that's why the gray sleeve is here. And then it's here on the corner of the caution striping that divides the outside barrier of our ATM lane. So it's going to be, you know, stopping traffic in addition to the do not enter and the stop bar that we have in the pavement. But it's also, you know, a DOT familiar signage package that, again, I think, you know, in the overabundance of caution is why it's included by the bank. And then it's a standard element with this design. It's one that we've repeated, you know, in many different jurisdictions and very similar applications.
But you are putting arrows on the pavement, correct?
Well, there's, so just to walk you through it, so there's directional arrow on the way in to direct traffic towards the VHD. On the way out, before you encounter a stop bar that's also on the pavement, there's also a directional arrow. Then we've got a stop bar, and then physically the lettering do not enter for traffic on the entry side, you know, in the traffic flow of this thoroughfare of the parking field. And then over here on the corner, that's where the DOT signage is. So it'd be angled back towards the traffic exiting with the stop to reinforce that they need to stop before entering that active traffic lane. And then for cars that are passing through in this thoroughfare in both directions, just to make sure that they know not to enter in this side.
Anybody have any concerns with that? This is, you said, is a standard uses of the signage for your other installations?
It is. It's one that's actually a standard that the bank's, excuse me, Architectural Design and Engineering Group has standardized for this type of installation.
Okay. Any other comments or concerns?
Are there any signs proposed elsewhere in the ShopRite Plaza to let motorists know that there is a Chase ATM on the site?
So generally, Chase will work with their signage vendor and their landlord if there is a marquee sign that has tenant panels in order to get one. I don't believe there's one at this ShopRite Plaza. So no, I don't believe any others are playing.
Yeah, there's one on Balltown, I think, yeah.
Is there one? Okay. That's generally outside of my work scope, so I don't get involved in that. That's usually permitted as a separate item and goes through its own entitlement process. If it in fact applies, I'm not 100% sure if it does or doesn't in this case.
Yeah, we could always add something, you know, about that stating if there's any other signage changes to identify that this is on site, to make sure that we're aware of them. We could include something in that.
And we can coordinate that, not a problem.
One on Balltown Road is kind of like a slide-out, slide-in.
Yeah, pretty straightforward. I don't think I'd have a problem with that. Ms. Gold?
I seem to remember that snow has been stacked in this area in previous years. And I was wondering if the landlord has developed an alternative place for that snow?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because I'm kind of curious what parking might be lost to it.
Well, it's a good question. So maybe Mr. Riley could just talk to, just put on your list to just give us some feedback on that.
I certainly can.
I think it's great these items are going to be taken care of in terms of the trees and the potholes. I mean, I go through there and I've got a truck, but I still hold my breath sometimes because I don't know what I'm going to come out with. But it's going to be refreshing to have all that repaired.
Yep.
Although I feel like for cleaning up the record, the closest building didn't show in that walkthrough, the closest building, there's no more forest across from this plaza anymore. There's a brand-new three-story apartment building, which is what actually the board was asking you to look from.
Yeah, that site's been developed, it showed, from Google Earth hasn't been updated.
Yeah, Google Earth hasn't been updated.
Yeah, I apologize. I am working on the limitations of being non-local. And yeah, as mentioned, that Google Earth shot is not current. So yeah, if there are other concerns, I'm happy to address. I think the comments that I made relative to where this location is inside the parking field, inside the property boundaries, and the intent of the cutoff fixtures to not have any measurable light bleed, you know, outside of the facility and where it's defined by our photometric. So I think that's still a reasonably valid situation.
Okay. All right. Are we ready for a resolution for our next meeting? Put that out there to the board. Mr. Scraby Tennis?
I'm satisfied.
Anybody concerned with the resolution next meeting? I'm sure the planning department will put together a good resolution, make sure to capture, you know, the conditions of the things that we've been working on. Make sure the site's cleaned up as part of this approval. All right? So I'll go with that. Anybody opposed? All right. So Mr. Riley will have a resolution for our next meeting, which is August 29th.
That's great. Thanks very much.
Can you just get back, if you hear anything about any other additional signage? Or at least check on the snow storage, the impacts of that, and let us know, okay?
Yeah, I can do both and we'll be in touch. Yeah, thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, folks. Have a good night.
Yeah, good night. All right, that's it for main part of our agenda tonight. That brings us to the planning department reports or updates. Laura, you have anything for us, or Clark?
Not too much, just obviously the Rosanna Mart and Rivers Ledge is height variance or before the zoning board this month.
Right, that's a different date than usual?
Yeah, all of our meetings got pushed because of the early voting. So I believe it's the 26th?
Yeah, it's whatever, the Wednesday before the 29th.
Yeah. It's the fourth Wednesday of the month instead of the third.
Laura, did we get an answer back on the mechanicals for that senior center?
He did say that they are in wells. There, it's not showing on the plans, right? But David asked him, and he did say that they sort of sit in roof wells.
So I questioned the gable roof system that was shown in the renderings and how that would look as a roof well. So the architect was going to come back with some updated drawings on that just to show a section through there.
Yeah, it's the 24th. Yeah, 24th. So both, two planning projects before the zoning board on the 24th.
Yep. Is that all that's on the agenda?
For?
Yeah, just, so there's at least those two items on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, there's five other cases. That meeting is going to be long. We have seven cases and two of them are planning.
People are wondering if there's any, any interest in the former Tai Tai site?
Um, you know, nothing's been formally submitted. We have gotten calls on it, so I would say there's interest. But we don't have a tenant change application yet.
Thank you.
Any progress on the Article 78 or ball timise?
No, we're still just waiting court decision.
New products or projects? You want to talk about anything?
I think that's pretty good unless you guys had specific questions. We'll probably have a full agenda on the 29th again. Obviously, two public hearings, some final resolutions, and maybe some updates from the zoning board meeting, so.
Mr. Henry, you have anything for us?
No, no.
All right. All right, we'll just move to commission business then tonight. Mr. Diopino, anything for us?
I believe the Broken Inn is going to put an application in for the 29th for the outdoor seating. There's some sketches that have been developed by Mr. Nicky.
Great. Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. McPartland?
I just wanted to make a request of the planning department. I was reading the comprehensive plan and the sections of the plan that address Upper Union Street. And there are several references to a engagement by the town of a design firm called Synthesis. They produced, they performed an analysis and a study and prepared a report that made, I guess, some suggestions for future development on Upper Union Street. So I thought it would be appropriate to review that, especially considering that there's a new comprehensive plan in the works. And I'd be curious to know how that comports with the proposed development we're considering right now and any other developments we might see on the horizon. And sort of along those lines, I've noticed that there are a few buildings for sale in the Upper Union Street area near Mr. Leece's proposed development on Eastern Parkway and the development that he already completed on the other side of the street, the Albany Men Urgent Care Building.
I'm familiar with that Synthesis plan. We used it to get an Upper Union Street grant. So I think I could pretty easily email that to the board. I don't even have to dig for it. I know where it is.
Great. Thanks, Laura. Any update on Lou Leece's development on Eastern Parkway? I think, David, you're the project lead on that.
Yeah, we haven't gotten building permit plans.
I think it's, might be back with his architect.
Yeah, I'd say, I think the last step, right, Clark can jump in, is that he needs the final architectural review board approval. I believe he got his TDE approval. He still needs to pay some TDE fees potentially, but he's very, very close. But he hasn't submitted final architectures or a building permit. And, you know, the planning board did approve it, so his two-year timeframe is ticking. But he has two years.
I wasn't sure if he got a final, so he got a final site plan?
Subject to architectural review board approval of the facade.
Oh, okay.
And just to recap on Mr. McPartland's statement, the Upper Union Street renderings are actually really good. And, you know, there is a way to, you know, have the board take another look at those. You know, I also have a professional relationship with Synthesis architects. I can always reach out to one of the partners out there if we wanted to get at least a copy of those drawings as a first-generation PDF. I think what's in the comprehensive plan is a copy of a copy.
Yeah, I have a copy of a copy.
But I'd be willing, you know, for the board's reference to see if one of the partners there would possibly share that information with us. But it would be great to see any of that implemented on any part of Upper Union Street. You know, it talks about sidewalks, landscaping, burying, utility lines, you know, improving the aesthetic view. I think there was a median at one point put in there.
Which is what we got the grant for. Yeah.
Great. Okay. Anything else, Mr. McPartland?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. Mr. Scraby Tennis?
I just want to make one quick point that I've reached out to Mr. Diopino, and Laura and I had a quick conversation recently about some issues relative to some residents in town asking about affordable housing. I think they have a plug for expanding and refining the affordable housing section currently identified in the comprehensive plan. So I think we're going to speak to the comprehensive plan committee about that issue. That's all.
All right. All right, Mr. Laflamme?
Actually, I did learn something from the former applicant. I mean, Equiduct Road, I think it's like 1864, but Art Mattia's project. He had done some requests to get a connection to the new low-pressure sewer system. And he did get the quote back. And just as an FYI, I don't think it would impact us as a planning board, more for as individual residents. But it was upwards of $30,000, which included the grinder pump that would have to be outside. And just as an FYI, just to share that estimate because it was insightful for me to just understand what the costs were. That may change when the ownership of that line gets handed over to the town?
The town accepted that line. But just as a perspective, like, you know, I live in a neighborhood very close to that area. And both myself and my neighbors have recently installed a septic, and they were in the range of $27,000 to $35,000.
The septic for?
Septics, yeah.
And that's conditional based on the geography and runoff and where you live specifically?
Correct. But out there, like, the reason that they're so expensive is that bedrock is only like, you know, two feet down, and there's like hardly any soil. So I don't know that it changes that much between, like, where I live and down Equiduct Road. But obviously, it is site-dependent.
Yeah, it might.
Yeah, I mean, they got a bore into the road, right?
They're small lots, so it's really hard to get a conventional septic system going. Sometimes you even need like advanced treatment septic tanks. So while that number is high, the alternative is also high. And, you know, connecting into the sewer obviously has lasting benefits that, you know, spending $30,000 on a septic does not.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else, Chris?
No.
Ms. Schoenfield?
Nope, nothing for me. Thank you.
No, sir, thank you.
Ms. Gold, anything?
Just a quick comment. Family member had to have a septic system redone several years ago and was shocked at the price then, and it's only gone up. A lot of them require more monitoring-type systems and everything. So it's not more of the same. They are more complex than they used to be. Requirements are stiffer. And I know in the past, there are parts of the town that have not been sewed. And the big thing was, we couldn't get them past the state controller because of the cost. But when you look at the alternatives now, that balance may have shifted.
Thank you. All right, and I have nothing further except for thank you to the board and thank you to the staff for their hard work. I appreciate it.
Oh, Chairman, I sounded very sure about Eastern, but I was just double-checking because I like to double-check. And I don't actually think we have a resolution, Patrick. I think I was wrong. I think we're waiting for the architectural review board to review it before we do a final resolution. Sorry about that.
Thank you. All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved to adjourn.
Moved by Mr. Scraby Tennis. Have a second? Those in favor of adjournment, sing a five by saying aye?
Aye.
Again, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. We are adjourned.